Three minutes.
Huh?
You don't have to count, three minutes.
I know how to count for three minutes.
I have not.
Public comments?
There's so many.
I think there's.
Now, we have to.
I have to go.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I would go off there every two years for the last twenty in here to.
Carter was.
All right, six P M. We'll call this regular village board meeting to order. If you'd all please join me in a moment of silence. And the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Clerk, would you take the roll?
Trustee Nice.
Present.
Trustee Tri.
Present.
Trustee Ferguson.
Present.
Trustee Charles.
Present.
Trustee Gerger.
Here.
Trustee Fletcher. Village President Kimzy.
Present.
Any public announcements this evening?
Well, less.
Turn that on, Les. Thank you.
Been here long enough, he's trained.
On behalf of the Chatham American Legion and the B F W, we'd like you, thank you for the village, for the proclamation, and for allowing us to put the flags along Route Four. I've had a lot of compliments about that, and they want me to prepare you that we want to maybe next year do it all the way around the square. So I'm trying to figure out a way to direct funds to be able to get some additional flags and things, so stand by.
Any public comments on agenda topics? Hearing none. We do have some guests with us here this evening, and gentlemen, if you don't mind, can I take care of one of our agenda items, get some recognition done, and send a champion on her way? We will come right back to you. Our first order of new business is Resolution twenty-four dash twenty-three, recognizing the achievements of Ally Landergan, state champion in sixteen hundred meters. A motion to bring this to the floor.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Trustee Nice made a motion, Trustee Gerger seconded. This reads, whereas the members of the corporate authorities of the village of Chatham are pleased to congratulate Ally Landergan on the occasion of winning the two thousand twenty-three I E S A class four A eighth grade state championship in the sixteen hundred meter run, and whereas Ally posted a state championship time of five minutes, nine seconds, or five oh nine point three seven, breaking Glenwood's Ally Newson's four A state record in the sixteen hundred. And whereas Ally also placed third in the eight hundred meter dash and anchored the four by four hundred relay to a fifth place at the two thousand twenty-three class four A state meet. And whereas Ally's season also included multiple championships at the Wildcat Invite, the Alton Invite, the Washington Invite, the Falcon Invite, and the Edwardsville Sectional in the sixteen hundred, eight hundred, and four by four relay events. And whereas Ally now holds the Glenwood Middle School eighth grade records for the sixteen hundred with a time of five minutes, seven point eight seven seconds, the eight hundred with a time of two minutes, twenty point two seconds, and the four by four hundred relay with a time of four minutes, sixteen point three seconds. Therefore, be resolved by the president of the Board of Trustees and the Board of Trustees of the village of Chatham that we congratulate Ms. Ally Landergan of the Glenwood Middle School Titan Track Team on the occasion of winning the four A I E S A sixteen hundred meter state championship, and wish her many more years of continued success. So. Ally, we do have a copy of this room.
I think Dave was the issue.
So we never require that anybody sit through the whole meeting, but if you do want to hang around until the very end, Trustee Nice has said he'll race you in a two-mile race, which is twice what you normally do because he wanted to up the ante, so.
He's driving.
I get a bicycle.
Pull these guys around. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Frank, do we've got a seat up here? Yeah, I know.
Absolutely, Frank.
Congratulations.
Can you train me to where I can do like a nine-minute mile?
Sure.
Be around town.
See ya.
Nice job.
You're off the hook.
Yeah, she didn't want to stay.
I thought Dave was taking his one.
I did, too. He used to be pretty quick.
Yeah.
I remember a day.
The guy with the microphone gets to make the call. All right, now we do have some special guests. We have Jim Allman, the county coroner, Dan Wright, county states attorney, and Andy Goldman, the county auditor, that are all here and wanted to appear and address our board and give us an update on what your offices are doing, so.
So thank you guys for allowing us to come in this evening. Appreciate it. I'm Jim Allman. I'm the Sangamon County coroner. Andy does this every other year. This is my first year doing this, so just we're opening up the lines of communication coming out. We're going to hit every village board and council in the county for the next couple of months. We're going two or three nights a week. So we really just wanted to come in and tell you a little bit about what our office is up to and ask you guys if you have any questions and bring any feedback back. So that's really what we're doing. So unfortunately, I am cognizant of the fact, no news is good news coming out of our office, right? So our numbers are up. Over three thousand deaths reported to our office every year. The number of autopsies that we're doing as a result of that is up as well. Our accidental overdoses are through the roof. We are going through that opioid crisis that everybody's talking about that's alive and well in our county, unfortunately. Just sat through another opiate meeting with the Department of Public Health and the Sheriff's Department, E E A. We all talked about the issues that are facing our community and the ways we can educate to try to avoid some of what it is that we're seeing. You know, the common denominator is fentanyl. It's in everything. So in my talks to the kids and the schools that I go to, I just explain to them that there's no more experimenting the days than, you know, when maybe some of us were in high school that might be able to get away with some experimenting. But that's, I'm seeing it in everything from methamphetamine to cocaine to Xanax to anything at all. It's just in everything. So we're really trying to get the word out, if it isn't already. But yes, we are excited about a regional coroner's facility that's being built. It's under construction now. We purchased the State General Register building right next door to the county building. We are going to be servicing twelve to thirteen counties that I have signed up ready to come to bring their cases to my forensic pathologist. We're going to create some revenue streams. We're going to avoid paying the tens of thousands of dollars that we are paying both hospitals right now. I think it's time, it's two thousand twenty-three, for Sangamon County to have their own morgue facility. So we've been utilizing St. John's for storage purposes, Memorial Medical Center for their forensic lab. So we've, we've got everything under, soon to have everything under one roof. That's the plan. And the sheriff's going to take over half of that building. We're going to get the other half. They may have some office space on the, on the third floor for other people. But that's really what's going on in our office, and I won't want to take too much time, because there's three of us. But do you guys have any questions about the coroner's office or what it is I do or what we're up to?
When do you expect the completion of the building?
Well, yeah, well, they told me that it'd be ready by the end of the year. I told them I'd take that back. So we've been.
Twenty-four.
They said initially that it would have been done, I guess, probably in the spring. That wasn't the case. Like everybody else, I know there's a lot of construction going on. Everybody's having a tough time getting things that they need delivered. But I, I know they're on it. The phase one is almost complete, the evidence portion of everything. Our garage area where our vehicles and our disaster management equipment is being stored, that's almost done. So we see progress and light at the end of the tunnel, so to speak, but they're telling me by the end of the year, but I don't know. I think the jury's still out on whether or not that happens, so.
Probably before EPA gets in the mall. You beat them, you're good.
The money line has now been set.
Yeah.
Thank you, guys. Really, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Dan Wright. I'm honored to be your Sangamon County State's Attorney. This is a, it's really a privilege to make, make these rounds because, you know, it's one thing to, you know, watch people's activity on social media, see what other municipalities are doing, but to just get here and show our faces and have an open line of communication, that's, that's what this is all about. So just thanks for your time tonight. The State's Attorney's Office has a number of divisions. We've got the traffic and misdemeanor division. Lots of folks, their common encounter with our office may be having a traffic ticket. I have had a traffic ticket or two in my life. Put that life of crime behind me for sure. But in any event, the felony division is where I spend a lot of my time with serious crimes up to, including first-degree murder. We also have juvenile division, which of course handles a lot of the same things that we deal with in the felony division, just with juveniles. Unfortunately, we're seeing a steady increase in violent crimes committed by juveniles. And so we work very closely, the felony division with the juvenile division. And oftentimes, a lot of folks that are just as involved in the juvenile division sadly end up just as involved in the felony division at some point in their adult life. A division that not many people know about is our civil division. And of course, that does the kind of work that Attorney Petrilli does for the village of Chatham, and she does it with distinction. But so every office in the county is represented by our office's general counsel. So things from contracts to compliance issues, we deal with those on a regular basis, and we have a very robust civil division. Our victim witness advocacy division, a division that I hope that no one in this room ever encounters because those are folks who help victims of crime navigate an often complicated, dramatic criminal justice system process after they've already experienced probably one of the most traumatic events in their life if they're a victim of violent crime. So we have four ladies that handle that, the port of work of that department. We also have a fifth victim advocate named Gibson. He's a black Labrador who's a courthouse facility dog, trained therapy dog, that comforts child victims in the courtroom, but also, you know, we have a number of first responders, fire, police that come through our office every day. And as many of you know, there's an awful lot of vicarious trauma that they experience in the field. And so Gibson is a great comfort to them as well. So he's not an employee of the, of the county. He's not, he doesn't receive a salary. And there's no expense incurred by the county to, to have Gibson. He's, goes home with volunteer handlers in the evening, which happen to be also our victim of violence advocates. And if he has any need for medical care or food or anything like that, that's all raised privately, so it's not any expense to taxpayers. So that's, that's something we're proud of. He's a tremendous asset to the office. It's one thing for I and the dedicated prosecutors in my office to go into courtroom in suits and, you know, stand up for victims and hold those accountable in our community who would commit crimes, but we don't investigate those cases. And we're not out there risking our lives and maybe not coming home. And every, at every one of these meetings, it's important for me to recognize the men and women of law enforcement in this community led by Chief Vern Foley and his team. I just cannot thank you enough. I can't compliment them enough, particularly the village of Chatham. They're a fine, fine police agency, and I'm proud to work with them. I just want to give Vern and his team a.
I have a question.
Yes.
The systems are backed up, or they weren't backed up because of COVID. Is that getting any better?
You're absolutely right. I mean, there's COVID. We couldn't try cases for an excess of two years. So, you know, there's that. The other thing that is challenged is we have a shortage of court reporters. And all felony cases are entitled to a court reporter. That's another thing that doesn't, you know, expedite cases. We also, just like, you know, any small business, all the way up to a multinational corporation, there's a staffing shortage, really, in probably any, you know, enterprise you could, you could point to, and my office is no exception. So we've got a shortage of attorneys in our office, likewise, public defender has a shortage as well. The only, we don't have a shortage of judges. They seem to all. Problems to get judges. So we, we continue to, to battle that backlog, and that's not necessarily a Sangamon County, unique to Sangamon County issue. It's a nationwide issue. But it's something that we are, we are constantly working to identify procedures to work with defense counsel and the court to move case to trial as much as. The other thing that, that can exacerbate the backlog is that we only have a hundred and twenty days under the Speed Trial Act to get a case to trial. But what's somewhat deceiving about that is that that clock is only ticking as we are asking for more time. And we rarely do that unless there's a unique witness issue, a witness availability issue. So it's typically some of the cases that are around longer are because it's on motion of defense counsel for more time. And they have a constitutional right to, you know, have an adequate defense, and they're typically given those continuances. So there are all kinds of unwieldy variables in the criminal justice system that impede making progress against the backlog. But it's, it's a, it's a real thing that exists, but we're mindful of it and are actively working with the other stakeholders in the justice system to, to move past that.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Board, I appreciate the opportunity to be with you, and I try to make these visits usually after the municipal elections. We have some new board members. We can give you an update on what's going on in Sangamon County. I'm Andy Goldman. I'm the Sangamon County Auditor. My job is to monitor the internal financial operations of the county. We are the official accountant for Sangamon County also. One of the other things we do, we take care of all the insurance for Sangamon County. Other things we do, for example, when the bills are paid, come out of the committees, they come to our office. We make sure all the proper documentation is in place, and the, if it is, then we approve it. We turn it on down to the treasurer's office, and the bills are paid weekly. In Sangamon County, we have balanced budgets, and we live within our means. We're proud of that fact. We know that mom and dad throughout Sangamon County have to do that. You have to do that as a government, governmental body, and that's, that's the way that we operate in Sangamon County. Another thing that we do is we're in charge of fixed assets and capital assets. We have about seventy-two hundred of those. Of that, that's about a two hundred and thirty-three million dollar value that we're in charge of. Four people in my office, so we, we're busy when we do things like this. The other thing is we help the county board with their budget. Before I took this job, I was on the county board for twenty and a half years. I was chairman of the finance committee for thirteen of those years. So I worked a lot with Brian McFadden, our county administrator, in doing the budgets, and we continue to do that. My chief deputy helps out with that. And so I see the money on the, coming in and the money going out at the same time, so it's, it's a good process for us to do. Our budget is a hundred and sixty million dollars this year. It's up about thirty-three million dollars. There's a big reason for that. ARPA funds, American Rescue Funds takes care of about half of that. Of that, we had about thirty-eight point seven million dollars. Roughly five million dollars of that went to help operate our county health department during the COVID situation. Another five million has been allocated for the rural radio improvements, updates that they're going to be making. Another reason for the, the budget being up this year is the MacArthur Extension. Or here in Chatham, you're more interested in the Woodside Road, Iron Bridge Road, that's where the MacArthur Extension is going to go into. We've been saving up for that project for quite some time, and my hope is that that will be done soon, starting very soon. It's going to be an inconvenience for some folks, but, but the project, you know, I have, we have high-speed rail that goes through. So it will be, it will be.
Right on cue.
Project.
Right on cue.
Yeah, right on cue. There it is. With that, I guess I'd be glad to try to answer any questions you have, but appreciate the opportunity to be here. Thank you.
So our, our pressing question, since, since Jim's setting odds here, does he have his facility first? Or does the Woodside Iron Bridge project start first?
But along those lines, you know, we did buy the. Which is a huge building. He is in that facility. His office is in that facility. County clerk's office is in there, the election office. We're doing remodeling of the first and second floors of the county building. My office is going to be moving here within a week. Then our county board office and our H R people would be moving over there temporarily. We'll be there for about six, seven months. We anticipate that, and then we'll come back to the county building. So a lot of construction going on with the Tenth Street corridor, a lot of construction. It's been kind of, it's difficult at times trying to get to the county building because they've got roads, they're working on roads, too, and certain roads are closed. But when it gets done, hopefully in twenty-five, we'll have a nice, nice facilities.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, all gentlemen. We appreciate what you guys do.
Thank you.
All right. Second item under new business. It's an ordinance waiving the park regulations to allow alcoholic beverages at certain village parks for July first and July twenty-first and twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three, for the Chatham J C's. Can I motion to bring this to the floor?
Make a motion.
Trustee Ferguson's made a motion, second by Trustee Charles. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. So moved. Item three is a resolution approving and authorizing the village to enter into an intergovernmental cooperation agreement for animal control services. I motion to bring this to the floor.
I like the motion.
Trustee Tri has made a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Trustee Nice. This is our annual approval of the agreement with Sangamon County Animal Control. I think discussion. Mr. Clerk, would you take the roll?
Trustee Charles.
Yes.
Trustee Ferguson.
Yes.
Trustee Gerger.
Yes.
Trustee Nice.
Yes.
Trustee Tri.
Yes.
Item four is a resolution consenting to the appointment of Megan Cochran as chief fiscal officer. I motion to bring this to the floor.
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Trustee Charles made a motion, second by Trustee Gerger. And I do entertain a motion to amend the effective date of this ordinance to be June twenty-second.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Gerger's made a motion. Any discussion on the amendment? Hearing none. Mr. Clerk, for the amendment.
Who was the second on that?
Chair.
Trustee Chair.
For the amendment. Trustee Nice.
Yes.
Trustee Tri.
Yes.
Trustee Ferguson.
Yes.
Trustee Charles.
Yes.
Trustee Gerger.
Yes.
And now, Mr. Clerk, for the resolution as amended.
Trustee Gerger.
Yes.
Trustee Nice.
Yes.
Trustee, Trustee Tri.
Yes.
Trustee Ferguson.
Yes.
Trustee Charles.
Yes.
Item five is an ordinance approving the purchase of an IONIC five for the electric department. Can I motion to bring this to the floor?
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Charles made a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Trustee Ferguson. Pat, you want to describe this?
I M E A has a rebate-type thing going where electric credits that we've earned over the years, they hold it, and then we have kind of special projects like this, then they'll release those funds. And they, they're offering it for an electric vehicle, not a hybrid, only all-electric. So I started looking into it because our meter reader's vehicle is, I think the meter reader is, he's the fourth person to use that vehicle since the village got it used. So it's time to put it to, to the auction block. So the I M E A in the first year would pay us ten thousand dollars towards the price of the vehicle, and then as long as we're making payments on it, another five thousand each year. So it would, you know, five-year loan, come close to thirty thousand dollars. It would cover a good portion of the, the cost of the vehicle. We asking you to waive bids because it's almost impossible to find vehicles to be able to meet those requirements, but we found one in town.
Any further discussion or questions? And this is part of the, this year's upcoming budget?
Upcoming budget.
Upcoming budget. Okay. Mr. Clerk.
Trustee Ferguson.
Yes.
Trustee Gerger.
Yes.
Trustee Charles.
Yes.
Trustee Nice.
I have to abstain.
Trustee Tri.
Yes.
And can I motion bring the consent agenda to the floor?
Make the motion.
Trustee Nice made a motion, second.
Second.
Second by Trustee Tri. Any discussion regarding the warrants or the minutes? Hearing none. Mr. Clerk, would you take a roll?
Trustee Nice.
Yes.
Trustee Tri.
Yes.
Trustee Ferguson.
Yes.
Trustee Charles.
Yes.
Trustee Gerger.
Yes.
Ex-village board meeting scheduled for six P M. on June twenty-seventh. I will entertain a motion to adjourn the board meeting.
Motion?
Motion by Trustee Tri, second by Trustee Ferguson. All in favor?
Aye.
And it stands adjourned.
All righty. All ready for the second one? It is.
Hold on one second. Pull this out.
It is six twenty-four. Time to call the committee of hold to order. Clerk, can I?
Trustee Nice.
Yes.
Trustee Tri.
Here.
Trustee Ferguson.
Present.
Trustee Charles.
Present.
Trustee Gerger.
Here.
Trustee Fletcher.
Village President Kimzy.
Also present.
Go back around.
All right. Are there any public comments on agenda topics?
Oh.
We have one?
Yes.
I just want to introduce myself. My name is Jill Nicklebauer. I'm taking Joe Pritchett's place. Um, he's gone on to, are better things. I am part of a family business, so I was pulling out of retirement, and here I am.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
This is my third time in Chatham. I was Chatham Clarion editor twice. Once in this, after college in the seventies, and then in the early nineties. So I'll be back to the village board and school board, so I appreciate your patience with me. And because it's, can't teach an old dog new tricks, but I've been doing this all my life, so. You get a strange call from somebody from six one eight area.
Welcome.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you for being here.
Yes.
Anything further on public, this would be, well, this is agenda topic, so the golf carts comes up.
Yeah, it would be public comments on village business, right?
During, during the administrative section.
All right, so hearing none for public comment. I need a motion to bring the consent agenda to the table?
Make that motion.
Motion made by Trustee Nice. Can I have a second? Trustee Tri has seconded. These minutes are for May ninth, two thousand twenty-three meeting. Any discussion on minutes? Hearing none. Roll.
Voice vote. Can you hear that?
We do have voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No old business, new business. We need to appoint a chair and vice chair of the committee of the hold. Can I have a motion to appoint?
I'll make a motion to, to put Kristen Toro back as president of the committee of hold.
Thank you. And then.
You'd like a second to that motion, right?
Please.
I'll make the second.
Can I have, Trustee Ferguson has made a motion, and it's been seconded by Trustee Nice in such a kindly. Voice? Oh, no, no, no. We need to roll, right?
Do you want to appoint vice at the same time?
Do I do it at the same time?
You could do it separately, but, or you could do it together.
I'll make a motion to appoint Trustee Ferguson as vice.
And I'll second that.
Thank you. All right, now we can do a roll for.
Gerger.
You want to close the non-positions?
Any discussion? Any further nominations? Hearing none.
For a year.
Trustee Nice.
Yes.
Trustee Tri.
Yes.
Trustee Ferguson.
Yes.
Trustee Charles.
Yes.
Trustee Gerger.
Yes. Present. Yes. Yes, yes, yes.
Jill, we all think we're comedians, but they talk to us, so.
Item two, the C M T engineering update.
Got his notebook.
Going on the roads.
Uh-oh.
Congratulations on the new positions.
No, thank you.
Observe. A couple of items here. I'll just run through the role list here. Building demo over on the square, done, completed. So, and plumber patching, we're done with that one. That's completed. Bike path patching on the trail, that's done. Bike path overlay in the park, that one's done. We've awarded the contract for the generator, and we've approved shop drawings on that. Now it's just a late game until later this fall when they can actually get the generator for the ground storage tank. But as soon as that comes in, Dustin informs me that they'll be doing some of the preliminary work to set the foundation and those type of things before the generator comes in, but there is a huge lead time on that. Gordon Drive, we're almost done. All the paving operations have been completed. Shoulders were finished on Monday. And then we have striping, and then manholes and adjustment grades are going to be done here shortly. You'll see like small pockets in the pavement.
Yeah.
They paved over the top of the manholes. What they do is they go around, cut those out, bring them up to grade, and fill them back in with concrete. So it's the exact same operation that we have on North Park.
Because there's two, two pretty good gouges on the northbound side.
That's what it is.
Okay, perfect.
So, and, you know, now that the state's attorney has left, I can assure you, I've taken that thing at nearly double speed limit. And, you know, now that the state's attorney has left, I can assure you, I've taken that thing at nearly double speed limit.
Bernard, he knows, the cameras.
Not a ramp.
We've got.
No longer a ramp. It's no longer a ramp, you guys asked for that improvement?
It is good.
Hopefully you meet your expectations. Great job.
Yes.
Still have some striping to do on that as well, so hopefully in the next week or two, that gets completed. Some ongoing projects, Street Crew is working along Spruce, doing patching activities. That was going on pouring concrete this morning. We're looking at some curb and gutter improvements along West Walnut. There we have some kind of lingering maintenance items where the gravel shoulder keeps washing out. There is storm sewer that runs along the north side of West Walnut. We're going to extend that curb and gutter out there and eliminate that constant maintenance activity. Pulled together plans for extension of water main underneath Route Four at Goldenrod. That was something when the Goldenrod project, you know, was done by the state. They put a sleeve underneath the roadway there to accommodate a future water main extension. So we're just looking at building out the system. Ultimately, that'll connect over to South Main, but getting the first section across the state highway and getting those permits taken care of. But plans are in the village's hands, we'll go ahead and permit that and put that out to bid. And then, let's see, still working with the state for obligation of rebuild Illinois funds. Now that we got the patching done on Plumber, we'd like to make Plumber look like Gordon. So that's the end game there, so hopefully get bids out here this fall on that. Manor Two subdivision, Manor Hill Two subdivision is moving along. Did finish the proof rolls on that, and they're pouring curb and gutter here this week. So that project is, is moving along.
Did that first, did you have to roll that twice?
Did I have to what?
Did you have to roll that twice, I was wondering?
Oh, yes. Yes, we had two six-inch rainfalls in between the first time that it was approved and came back and checked that after the rain, and it did not pass. Contractor had to scrape all the rock off the subgrade, redisk, re-dry it, re-compact it, re-proof roll it until that was good, and then put rock back on it again, and then proof roll it again.
Somebody asked me about why that was done twice, and I explained what you did.
Your roads don't look like all the other ones.
Correct. I explained them, I explained them the rule process.
Thank you.
Really, I'm like, yes.
Yes.
And I gave them examples of roads that we have that didn't do that back in the nineties and early two thousands.
There were some unhappy people, but yes, they had to laid all the rock off and then re-compact the soil and.
Well, they were happy when, after I talked to them.
Yes, so, but yep, that's what's going on. And then continuing to work with Dustin, Pat, and, you know, the village crew and just addressing whatever projects come up, so.
West Walnut work has the Savannah intersection? On the shoulder washout?
We, we did not put that in yet. We, we're, we're, we have a list of projects, and if things fall out, we can plug things in. That was one of the ones, but it's not at the top of the list to get done this year.
It's on the list.
It's on the list.
Made the list.
Made the list.
We need a similar list next year, so you have to pick and choose.
Overall, Gordon was not that much of a hassle, it was done pretty well.
Yeah, it was nice that they waited until after schools let out. That made all the difference in the world. I mean, they really, even with the reduced traffic after schools let out, they were complaining about how bad it was along Walnut, and it's like, ah, you guys have no idea how bad this would have been a week earlier, so. It's tough, lot of one-way traffic, lot of flagging activities, but yeah, overall, went smooth and no major issues, so.
They had one of the nicest flag guys out there, because every time I drove by.
The guy with the beard?
Yes, waving at everybody.
Huge guy, like seven foot tall?
Yes.
It was a long way.
It does.
Get away, I mean, when you're not happy about a traffic situation, somebody's waving at you? It was a long way.
Exactly, so, okay, well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job, Jim.
Thank you, Jim. Alrighty, so next we have the village manager update in concert with the FY 2024 presentation of the budget.
That's what you're gonna do right now, right? Okay.
Absolutely.
Look at the screen too. Okay. Alright, so I'm here with the fiscal year 2024 proposed budget. I'm gonna go to the next one, Dan. This is just the outline of what I'm going to talk about, and also Pat, Vern, and Dustin are going to help me as well on their parts of this. But first, I'm going to talk about the fund structure, then kind of our process, budget goals that we have every year, and then just the overview of everything that we've done for the budget this year so far. The fund structure, this hasn't changed, this kind of just shows a visual of, we have our governmental funds, our proprietary funds, and our fiduciary funds. Our major ones are the general electric and water, which is what we focus on in this presentation. They make up the biggest chunk of our budget, so that is going to be what's coming up. The budget process, this doesn't change much either year to year, but I just like to highlight what we do to gear up to this point and then to vote on it. February, we really focus on estimating revenues, personnel, debt service, electric, water, and sewer expenses. At that point, we can do that pretty early on with the numbers that we have thus far. Then March is mostly Pat and I discussing those things that I've put together at that point. Oh, also in February, we kind of do a overall increase of our last year's operating lines of three percent, just as a general increase for the year-to-year increase of just the operating lines. Then in April, we have a lot of meetings with our department heads, get together on what we've put together so far, and then kind of see where we're at, and then start compiling their requests that could fit into the budget for the year on top of what I've already put together. May, we just continue working on it, continue meeting with our department heads, and we start refining things a little bit more in May. And then June, where we're at now, there's really just minor adjustments being done. A lot of it's pretty solidified, not much is going to change between now and when you guys vote next week. At least that's what I've told everyone. We're trying to keep that, that in mind. So we're presenting the PowerPoint tonight, that gives you the overview. And then next board meeting, we are having the public meeting, public hearing to allow the public to provide input if they would like, and then the appropriation will be voted on during that meeting. Our goals, we always have customer service, performance, economic development, and quality of life on there. There's some descriptions on there as well, just highlighting those things. And then, next slide, we're talking about the overview of our proposed revenues. So these are the things that I estimate back in February, they're kind of compilation. The IML gives a lot of good estimates on how I put some of this together. We use, IMEA gives estimates. We also use past year information to compile what we've planned to bring on in this year. As you can see in the pie chart, why we talk about the three funds the most, they make up a huge chunk. So general fund, I'm estimating approximately 8.5 million to come in this year. Electric, 11.1 million, and water and sewer, 7.5 million, for a total of 30 million. Then our proposed expenditures, I've got also about the same looking pie chart, makes sense. General fund, we're estimating 9.3 million. I also want to talk about the capital projects, that's right around 2 million. We'll mention that a little bit later and what makes that up. And then electric, 12.7, and then water and sewer, 8.2, for a total of 35 million, approximately. This next slide, I kind of wanted to talk about the difference in revenue versus expenditure. As you can see from the last two slides, the expenditures do exceed the revenues overall. But just in general, every, every year, and it's been like this forever, we budget for revenues very conservatively, and we also budget for expenditures slightly overestimated, and that's just to be fiscally responsible in what we're putting in there. We usually do see these funds break even or even have a slight surplus because we do need to build up a three-months reserve for our funds in case there is an emergency that we would need that. To kind of explain the deficiency, so we attribute that to expenditures that are to be financed with restricted cash issuance of debt and fund reserves, if sufficient cash is not produced by the annual revenues. Some expenditures are also contingent on the fund's revenue performance, so I've talked to all the department heads and Pat, and, you know, some things we will monitor revenues for and we will not spend if revenues do not perform the way we expect them to. And then just examples of some of those things that would be funded by fund reserves, issuance of debt, or restricted cash that's kind of making up that deficit that we talked about, the 30 million versus the 35. We've got a cash carry forward from prior fiscal years in the capital projects fund. Some departments have carried forward cash that they did not spend, so they're now budgeted to spend some of that this year. We also plan to transfer another million dollars from the, from the general fund to the capital projects fund for future years' projects, and that's totaling that approximate $2 million total on there for cash on hand. So not necessarily going to be spent all of it, but it's being put to the side for projects this year and future projects. Then we have our estimated liability related to accrued benefits. This is always budgeted every year, it's an estimate of everyone, all the village employees, vacation, sick, and comp time. Obviously, not all of this is going to be paid out, but in order to be fiscally responsible, we do need to budget for all of that in there, just to have it just in case of any issues. Then another portion of that, we've got our ARPA grant expenditures, so we've received all those funds. We have all the cash there to spend, but we have budgeted that ARPA plus other grants are totaling to approximately a million dollars for FY 24. And then our potential financed items are vehicles, which will be talked about in the upcoming slides, and that's around 4.0, I'm sorry, 760,000. Yeah, 4.7 million. Those all total to 4.7 million, and that's where you can see the deficit is being made up for if we were to incur all of those expenses, which we will not, most likely. And then this next slide, I kind of wanted to show that trend of what I was talking about, how expenditures usually do exceed the revenues when we budget. So if you look at the blue and reds, the blue is the budgeted revenues, and the red is the budgeted expenditures. And then right next to that, for each year, I've got FY 21, FY 22, FY 23 projected. It's pretty solidified at this point, and then FY 24 budget estimated. You do see the green exceeding the purple each year, that we do have it as a balanced budget in the end. It's just how budgets are put together and revenues conservative, expenditures a little over, but ends up being good, so.
We learned budget 102 favor. Green, as long as it's bigger than purple.
That's right. So then, now we've got a little more detail coming with the three major funds, general, electric, and water. And I'm going to hand that to Pat, the thing to talk about, the first one?
Let's do the general.
Thank you, Kayla.
The general fund used to be the poorer fund. We're not so much anymore. Things that have changed over the years is sales tax revenue that for online sales is coming back to this community, which has really bumped our sales revenue up. The other thing that's helped the village a lot is getting the ARPA funds. We've been able to take care of projects that we have not been able to do, or we wouldn't have been able to do without having that type of money. So of, we, we're, we're going to spend it over a three-year period. Year one's done, year two, we're aiming for 700,000. Next year, we'll have another 700,000 and change. The things that are out for bid, water tower generator, the Plummer Boulevard patching, which is, has already been completed, like, like Jim had said, the bike path overlay completed. We're planning on putting up new fencing down at our South Main location. We're planning on putting the gate up at our South Main location. And we also plan to fund out of the ARPA funds, three fully equipped new police vehicles. Other potential ARPA items, general foreman vehicle, park storage building, electric street sign board, that that way, electric or electronic street sign board, that way the street department or the police could use it. Oil and chip parking of the Chatham Community Park. The intersection at Savannah and Walnut Street.
Got blurred out on the list.
Yeah.
Good job. I'm trying to figure that printout though, Pat. Is it the bottom?
The welcome to Chatham signs. For the remaining fiscal 2024, we had $200,000 in CLURE demo grant. All that work has been completed, I have not turned all the paperwork into the state yet. It should be due next, next month around this time. We're working with them to find out if the remainder of the funds, because we did have a decent amount left over, whether we can use that for other items, maybe at that location. The economic development grant is moving along. And for this coming fiscal year, we have at least, at the least, 2.4 million coming from the state for numerous types of projects that we can use down here. Want to elaborate on that?
I always want to caveat that one, because
Yeah.
in the budget versus when it's actually released, so when Kayla's talking about the fact that revenues are very conservative, they don't include that. Should it come, we have the expenditure authority to use that. We don't, we don't count on the timing of when it shows up, but you do, we do know that it's from there.
The last year, we were able to save enough money from the general fund to, to move a million dollars into our capital development project. We were able to do that again this year with our department heads doing a good job of keeping things online, not asking for stuff that they really don't need. So we're going to move a second million dollars into that capital project fund. Don't know what that's going to be spent on, but it's there in case we need it. We're, we're, we're still going to hope for development of the Village Square area. As the year goes on and as we see what these funds from the state can be used for, we'll be coming back to you then with possible ideas of, you know, whether we hire some architects or engineers to be able to start putting some plans together, or some concepts of what can be done with that. What kind of financing packages we can put together in partnerships to be able to build stuff on that square. That's all stuff that you guys will, will face and discuss and talk about during this year. But we don't have any of that. this year, but we don't have any of that in the budget right now. Dustin, if you want to talk about the parks and the street?
We'll start with the Parks Department. First off, the welcome to Chatham signs that we ordered a couple of years ago, or started that process, they are going to be in, I think in the next month will be installed. So we have them right there at the top to finish paying for those. Also, Shane Hill did a great job working with I M E A and getting us reimbursement on $45,000 worth of LED lights that will go up at our baseball fields and replace the lights so we can save money there using less electricity.
That's the same program that we're using versus the electric car.
And then Pat has talked about the, the gates and the security cameras down at the, the shop, at the electric and water shop at the entrance there, 9507 South Main. That's the $22,000 there that they got through an annual safety grant. Also, having meetings with our department heads, me and Pat worked with them, trying to figure out what we needed to be successful in the next couple of years. And one thing we realized was is we have a couple of old trucks and they're really, really old. We've already in the last 10 years put new beds on them, constantly putting new parts into them. So we talked about it and we're going to finance a new tandem truck that will also throw salt via plow truck. And then underneath that, we're going to put another salt spreader tailgate on one of the other trucks so we can replace both of those trucks with newer trucks and get the job done. And then in those meetings, also talking with the street department, Barry D's, we talked about how our signs are really just needed upgraded through town and how we don't throw a lot of money at that. We don't really, we just kind of fix them as needed. So now we wanted, we asked for some extra money so we could go through town and replace some of those posts, some of those signs, upgrade those, make those look nicer. And started doing that year after year after year, kind of like our bike trail that we've been doing and improving year after year. So that's all I have for the street department.
One question, Dustin.
Yeah.
Could those lights that are being moved, could they be moved to this soccer field?
Yeah, I think that's been discussed, so possibility for sure.
Awesome. Thank you.
Okay, just kind of an overview of the police department. Right now, you're going to, you see at the top there, this is three new officers from the Mecklen County facility, basically similar to ISP. What you'll see is that you'll see, one, you'll see three new faces, but two additional officers, which we've always been behind the curve as far as hiring personnel and such. So that's one thing I'm asking for this year in the budget. Next, you'll see the Flock cameras. I can't speak enough about the Flock cameras. They've been very successful. We've had them a little bit, well, right about a year, a lot of success stories from the Flock cameras. It really helps us out tremendously when it comes to investigations and such. And with the Flock camera system, we're able to take that system, it's throughout the state, only throughout, throughout the U.S. So if we have any issues whatsoever, we always partner with Springfield, obviously just to the north of us there, and they have many cameras as well, I think like 69 cameras. So anything that happens typically, you know, we're going to be in the Village of Chatham or the city of Springfield, we're able to track those individuals down who's running in and out of our community. So one thing I'm asking for there is send the additional cameras. If those are granted, basically that would cover every entrance and exit out, out of the Village of Chatham. So there's no way of getting in or out of Chatham without your license plate being basically on, on a camera somewhere. So that's one thing that's being asked for. The body cams, this is something that we have to meet the criteria, meet, meet the obligation before January 1st of 2025. I was hoping to do it this past year. Our vendor, who we're looking at, is they're coming out with a new body cam here, probably here in the next couple of months. So we kind of put that on hold until the vendor was able to come out with the new model. That new model is supposed to be announced probably here in August, September. We hope to move to the body cams for all officers through the department December of '24 or January, I'm sorry, December of '23 or January of '24. That's anticipated timeline moving forward. As you can see, as far as the grants, we did receive a grant from IPMG for 10,000, I'm sorry, that's from S R T C. It's a small rural tribal council that I applied for and I received a grant for, for the cameras of the 10,770. The other one is a possible grant from IPMG for the body cams, for the cost of the body cams, which I think from what I've been talking to as far as their vendors and stuff, it's not a 100% guaranteed, but they're pretty much guaranteed that, you know, if you do go out and buy, go out and buy these products, that they will reimburse for that. The bulletproof vest program is that something we apply for every two years. Our biggest purchase, I think, was two years ago. I think we'd had purchased like 11 vests, but they expire every five years. So that's something that we apply for every two years. Initially, we just don't have as many vests to buy, but they are expensive. Part of the capital projects, as you can see, for 2023, some extra items I'd like to look to purchase is when we talk about a shield, we're talking about a shield that's rated to stop an AR-15 round, which is, you know, obviously we see a lot more violence out there and we see a lot more people with, with the rifles. The shield is around $78,000. We currently have one right now in our possession and we have another, we have another one as well. The players, we currently have the players. What we're looking to do is if we're able to ascertain, ascertain a new players, what we do is with our existing one is turn around and give it to the parks and they could turn on, turn around and use that, utilize that for the Parks Department if need be. The helmets, the helmets are bulletproof helmets, which they're not cheap either. They're about $600 a person for the helmets, and I'd really like to have those helmets as possible. We try to give our officers as much protection as possible with the, you know, with today's climate. That concludes the police budget. If there's any questions. Yes, sir.
We have one shield already or we have two shields already?
We have two, but one's rated for an AR-15 round. The other one's rated for like a threat level three, like a handgun round. So we do have two, but you know, it's
No, no, I, I'm just, I just want to clarify the number because no, we've never seen on TV. I mean, going into a school with those three would be pretty awesome. Also, are we leasing the Flock cameras or are those purchased and we just?
Technically speaking, we are leasing. You don't own anything from Flock. The only thing you, you rent their software basically is that, that's, that's what it looks at. You don't own anything. The cameras are owned by Flock. We receive all the data and everything else from, from the Flock system. The cameras themselves are owned by Flock.
And they replace them?
Right.
Yeah. If something's damaged or something's broke?
The annual maintenance where we're good. Yeah, no, that's why I was asking because those would be replaced all the time, I would think, so.
And we've had, we've had some minor hiccups here and there every once in a while, the one on Gordon Drive, you know, it's every once in a while turn purple or something for whatever reason, they go out there within a couple of weeks and they repair the camera.
It's their job.
Absolutely.
Job because we don't own it and it's
Yes.
No, I think it's great.
Yep.
Yep, at least. Just want to make sure. Cool. Over to the electric department. We hired the consultants, utility services consulting for $36,000. We pay them about $3,000 a month. What they're doing is helping us become compliant since ISO has determined that there's two sections of both of our substations that are considered part of the transmission network. Then we have to be certified as a transmission operator. So we've been going through that process now for the last month and a half.
Once we complete that or something, don't we eventually get the tax, the electricity going through there essentially?
That's the next step of what these guys
Potentially, we're going to start collecting a gigantic amount of tax for all the juice flowing through there.
Change two words on it. Potentially is right.
Yeah.
Change gigantic to and
I know.
You're not supposed to say tax on it, it's a tariff.
Tariff, tariff, fair enough.
But that's been working out real well. The company that we hired is very impressive and been able to take care of all of our needs and working well with the city of Springfield because they manage both of our substations for us. So essentially, they produce probably 85% of the information that this company needs to be able to get us certified. So they've been working hand in hand and it's, it's been working out very, very well. We, myself and Dave and Shane met with electric system assessment consultants the other day, and we're looking at them as an option, as a replacement for Shane, where we hire a consulting firm to do our design and look at upgrades and keep, set up maintenance schedules and everything else for our system. We do not have a, a person on staff that wants to move into that position or has the knowledge that Shane has. So we're, we're looking at that. They're putting together a proposal. We put 120,000 in the budget for a placeholder just in case. We're not exactly sure how much their fee is going to be to do the system assessment, but we think that should cover it. We constantly do tree trimming in the electric department and we set aside $110,000 to do that, to keep trees out of the overhead electric lines. We're still planning on putting, each department is sharing the cost in putting the security cameras in down at their shop areas and, and the electric gate. We're ordering a truck in 2024, but I think they said it was what, a five year? It'd be five years before the thing is ready. So we need to put it in our budget and we need to have, we'll put an ordinance in front of you is to approve the purchase of it with the option that if it falls through and they can't build it and they can't do it for that price, we can always back out of it. But we have to get in line to get the thing ordered. The electric meter or the electric vehicle, one ton dump truck and a, a storage building. Last year, we had numerous thefts of our copper wire and those were rolls that we ordered specific for certain projects. So there was a certain amount of wire on there that was measured and cut so that when we go out and do that job, you know, we don't have great big pieces and splices all over the place. This guy took, took that and, and cut it up into pieces and hauled it over the road tracks and took it down to a place in St. Louis and sold it. We want to be able to keep that because that and our transformers now are worth so much money, we can't afford to leave those outside. So we can put up a storage building for $45,000 and keep it locked. And then Dustin, you want to do the last part of the water?
Sure. The water budget was probably the hardest of all of them. Kayla and Pat challenged, challenged me to cut that one severely to match where the, the funds are. So some of the stuff on this list is potentially something that we would buy, but if our revenues don't match our estimates throughout the years, then they, we will not be allowed to purchase these. So starting with the power washing of the exterior tanks, our elevated tower, I noticed on the bottom has a lot of dirt and debris buildup, buildup. And when they painted that tank, they made it clear that if you keep it clean, the paint will last a lot longer. So it's really important to get those clean. So the 15,000 is to clean the elevated tank and also about every year and a half to two years, we've been cleaning the ground tank with the mold buildup on the north side. So that's to do both tanks this year, have those look clean. The midco tank repairs, last year we had our first inspection since we had them redone on the inside coating. And there were several, several areas where there was pitting and rust pitting and some, some bad spots. And so midco actually just made these repairs last week. They sent in diapers and repaired all of these areas. So that's already been completed. The security cameras, Pat has talked about it, each of the departments are responsible for a portion of that project. And the two optional things we have if we have a decent year, the sewer camera, right now we pay for a company to come in and look at our sewers, storm sewers, sanitary sewers to see if they need repairs, these video cameras. This is just a smaller version of that where we can push the camera in in an emergency like at night or if we need to do it quickly to make a fix. So this will help the crews instead of waiting a day or two for a company to come in, we can get a look at that and maybe fix it, you know, faster and get to. The fixed meter network, we have a fixed meter network that reads the meters, it's like the smart meters without somebody going on. Probably about half of the meters we have in town don't work on that because we don't have the right technology. This is just putting an investment into buying more of those new meters so that we can get more of the town working off of the fixed meter network system. Again, like I said, those two are optional at right now. Let's see if Kayla allows us to buy those, but that's where we're at with the water and sewer fund. Any questions?
Dustin?
Two more items. Yard waste recycling, refuse. We're scheduled to put the branch pickup and leaf bag pickup out for bid again this year. I've got probably 90% of that done and I'll put that in front of you is probably at the next meeting to review. I think we talked in the past that we would go for a three-year contract this time and a couple of the waste haulers had asked if we would consider a five-year one because that gives them more lateral, latitude when they go into a bank to buy a piece of equipment to be able to take care of a project like this if they know they've got a certain, you know. So consider that. We can, we can add that in, but that's something that people have talked about.
Well, don't you have to put one bid request out though? Because I remember that was a big issue the last time around about whether it could be a one-year or a three-year. So can you have multiple, like someone submitting a three-year bid, someone submitting a five-year bid? I'm just curious.
What we put out was proper and was self-explanatory enough that they should have been able to do that.
Got it.
What, what we would do with the state would, we'd do a one-year bid, a three-year bid, and a five-year bid, and then the procurement officer would choose what was the best fiscally.
And that's, that's real similar to how we
We're presenting it.
You just put both lines on one page.
And that's, that's kind of what we did. We said, you know, how much for a one-year, what, what is the total cost to pick up branches for one year?
What's your three-year price?
What's your three-year price? What's your five-year price?
So that's what we'll be getting this time around when it goes out for bid, a one, a three, and a five, or just a three and a five?
I don't think we should do a one.
I would agree. Let's just do a three and a five.
We already did a one, right?
Yeah, we just did it, completing that contract.
I would echo that. I'd like to see three or five.
Okay. So I'll put that together that way. The two other items that fall under the green program are the street sweeper, which the guy that we have that operates the street sweeper is doing a fantastic job. He's all over town. The streets have never looked better, I don't think. So if people have any complaints or problems or if areas that need to be cleaned up, they need to call Dustin or myself and, 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 and let us know. That pays for that lease and then we, we have sufficient funds that I don't see where we would have to raise the green fee again this year.
Good.
Cemetery perpetual care fund. At some point, the village plans to upgrade the road within the cemetery. The village also plans to begin allocating 80% of the funds that we receive on lot sales to put into, to create a, you know, cemetery care fund and possibly construct mausoleum for, for cremations. Seems like more and more folks are going with cremation. If we could build a wall of cremations and have them four to five height and then turn around and have people in compartments that way, it would take up less space. You could put walkways that kind of have, before Paula Staub left town, she kind of came up with a concept and always thought that at the top part of the cemetery on the north side of the road would be a good place for that. We could put additional parking there and so we'll, we'll start looking into that serious this year. And the motor fuel tax fund. We get 227,000 annually. The Gordon Drive improvements from 2023, it's 515,000. is five hundred and fifteen thousand. We're still planning on, uh, resurfacing, uh, Plumber Boulevard this year. That's, that's, that's in the budget. Yeah, seven hundred and fifty seven thousand. And we still have on either it'll happen this year or next year, a couple of the experimental, uh, roadway overlays that we're gonna do in some of the subdivisions so that we don't have to do full replacement. So things have been looking pretty good in the, in the MFT fund. The last thing I wanted to bring up was, uh, we, 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 uh, looked at renewals for our health insurance and, uh, after having numerous meetings, uh, our recommendation is to stay with Blue Cross Blue Shield. At, at first they came with a twenty percent increase. And then we talked to them and then they took it down to fourteen. We talked to them one more time and they took it down to a seven percent increase. Now that's after two years of decline. And so we went back and looked three years ago. What we're actually would be paying this year is a little bit less than what I think we were paying per employee three years ago. So our recommendation is to, to stay with them then. So you'll probably have an ordinance next time to act on that to give us permission to, to, uh, get our contract renewed.
Is that the same number of employees you've had?
Yeah, we're, we're, we bounced right around fifty-five.
Seven percent's a win.
Yeah.
Yeah. The twenty, we were like, oh man. We looked at some of the other ones and.
Twelve percent's a win.
Yeah.
And that's not changing their plan, right?
Not at all. And it, the, the one thing with, I have to admit with Blue Cross Blue Shield is they seem to add more and more, uh, prescriptions that they cover a hundred percent on. And I think that's one thing that a lot of our employees take, take full advantage of.
One thing to keep in mind on that though, that, that said, uh, the, the employees do get a different effect. That's what we've been doing the last.
Yeah. A new, a new hires starts with depend, a hundred percent coverage for themselves and fifty percent for their dependents. Existing hires over the years have been paying two percent more for their dependents with the goal of getting down to fifty percent at some time. Raise wise, we're looking at three percent range, uh, for the employees. And the proposal is to do the cost of living, uh, in two, uh, stages, just like we did last year due to the way that inflation and things have been going. So those, both of those items have been built into this budget also.
He just tells me inflation is zero.
Is that, that bonus or that second part, is it built in any kind of retention program? I mean, if I, if I'm here a year, I get the same thing as if I'm here twenty years or is there a retention?
It's, it's, it's in as a temporary solution.
Right. I remember that part.
Where we're at. When, when we started this, you know, it was in the middle of a campaign, national campaign.
Yeah.
So everything had been downplayed, even though we saw these inflationary pressures would last longer than what everybody wanted to admit. And they're still lingering. They're relieving this year. There's, there's relief in it this year. So I don't know that this becomes a, a long-term issue.
Yeah, I was just asking if there was retention.
You have to be, it's.
To be a full-time employee.
You have to be still employed at the times there.
And I think the only ones that were exempt from it were the linemen.
Okay.
Because when they, we negotiated their contract, they got a five percent, you know. Other than that, all other full-time employees.
But they've been here a month or they've been here three, thirty years?
We, we pay a thousand forty in, uh, I think it's July and then the other thousand forty in December.
Thank you.
So is there anything else that you guys can think of or want to answer questions on, on the budget? I gotta thank Kayla, Dustin, Vern, Shane and all their hard work of putting this together every single year. We do it every year. This is the eighth budget that I've put together. It's always enjoyable working with these people to, to do this. We argue, we fight, we laugh. It's, I would miss it if I wasn't doing it.
It's fun to see the departments get what they need to.
It is.
I mean, I know that they don't have, they don't get everything they need, but.
And to be able to.
Do that.
And to be able to still put two million dollars in, in reserve. I think we've done good.
And Kayla puts up with my phone calls and spreadsheets and.
We talked briefly about pickleball courts a while back. I see that's not in the Parks Department budget in any way. I'm assuming that's just been shelved and we've moved on from that or?
We, we extensively studied that. We, we put together a concept of building sixteen new pickleball courts. The estimates for the construction are from Jim are somewhere between seven hundred and fifty thousand and a million. And then when we had a company come in that installs those and does the turf fields and everything else, they had just done, CMT were the engineers and this company did the work of putting twelve pickleball courts, a couple small covered pavilions and bleachers down in Edwardsville at, uh, Plumber Park. And it was a million and two, I think for that. So.
Edwardsville money.
So yeah, what about resurfacing or putting these mats on the, on the ones that we have? Or is that?
We, we could, we could do that. The thing is, is that they're cracked and there's not much luck in fixing the cracks. The, the company looked at them and said, there is no subbase here. Somebody put asphalt on top of dirt and, uh.
Not do the roller test?
It, those would be per, fine for basketball courts because the ball's bigger and if you hit a crack, it's not the end of the world. But pickleball or tennis, if it hits a crack, it's.
It's, yeah.
It's a mess. I, I'm hesitant to put, you know, fifty to sixty thousand dollars in repairs into something that.
It's just gonna do it right again.
You know, we could look at, especially next year, when we have this ARPA money that we're trying to get rid of the last part of it to start a new pickleball courts on the other side of the concession building. And then maybe add on to them every year or every other year, or kind of find a combination of people that want to sponsor some of it. We get some sponsorship money that helps move the things forward. I'm, I'm open for options on that and I think, I think that would be a fantastic place for it. It'd be right next to the concessions, parking lots right there.
Yeah, I get it. I, I just saw it. Now I have the facts. It's over a million dollars. That makes sense to why.
For, for a big complex, we could do it, you know, we could do another eight again, you know, for maybe a half a million.
Got it.
But.
Okay.
If you don't put a good subbase down and do the concrete right or the asphalt right. But I'm more than willing to, as the year goes on, to talk to people about options to be able to try to do that. But putting, fixing the ones that we have now is putting up an expensive Band-Aid.
Yeah, I get it.
On something.
Have we checked with Piper and see how much they're putting into there?
I'm sorry?
Piper is building, Piper Glen, building pickleball courts. So I was wondering if we've checked with them to see who they've got coming in to build those courts.
It's expensive.
Okay.
They're up in arms. I think their HOAs went up seventy-five bucks. And they had a two pair, a two-page letter about the noise of pickleball and it's, it's very loud and.
So that's becoming a, a problem there.
Yeah.
We went and played a pickleball game last night.
And we really will try and repurpose these other lights, right? Like if we're literally taking down these baseball lights, I gotta imagine there's lots of places, like those soccer fields really.
That was our plan was that.
Could really use them.
Light over to the soccer field.
So they could use.
Yeah.
If that soccer field's over there had lights, those people would be jumping for joy. I mean, they can play.
Do you know how loud the lights are?
I know. I'm sure everyone in South Park would be super angry because those kids be playing soccer till two in the morning.
Yeah, especially with the pickleballs going back and forth.
I'm sure. It'd be crazy.
It's crazy.
That, that's all. Thank you. Sorry.
So there'll be an ordinance in two weeks for you guys to vote to accept the budget. Okay. If you have any questions between now and then.
Come see you.
We'll be more than happy to discuss them.
This one that was on there that.
Yeah.
Looks like just lists of numbers. That's the appropriation. So that's, that's what you actually vote on is the totals for each line.
You mean it's not the PowerPoint presentation we've already?
Presentation is on there, but.
That explains what this all says.
The graphs were great. Yes.
They are very, very helpful. Great job, guys.
Yeah, that was really nice to see.
I will vote yes or present for the PowerPoint.
Either or.
So there is, there is a public hearing at the next meeting. Did you skip it? I don't remember what you printed. Did you print five forty-five or six for the public hearing on the budget?
Oh yeah, we're usually.
We'll, we'll double check. If it's five forty-five, we'll remind you that it's five forty-five. Um, we do have a public hearing that.
Look at board docs, but I'm pretty sure we said it at six.
It says six. It's in the paper Thursday. Joe, what's it say?
Pressure's on already.
She's like, what?
I think that was the last, uh, ad that Joe took from us before you, was, and I saw it in there, so.
Six. I think it's six too. Yeah, six. All right. Anything further? Oh, we have one. Wait, we have to.
Wouldn't that be public property reparation?
Public property.
You can do it. We, you can do it here too.
Well, let's discuss the golf carts.
Yes.
It's, it's no secret.
Golf carts.
Golf carts. Did you see the email? Um, I, I mean, I don't know. Uh, I'm getting plenty of people asking me about them. I know we have a couple of board members that are in favor of it. Um, I think there's some options there. I didn't know what the rest of you guys thought about it. I mean, I'm suggesting we look into some sort of, um, ordinance that might allow them in parts of our community.
I, I get a lot of ask on that as well.
It's a topic.
It's a topic.
Walnuts, I mean, people I've talked to, they're concerned about going across Walnut.
Of course.
And up C Route four.
Of course.
And I, I mean, access, unfortunately, folks north of Walnut, the parks on the south side. So that's gonna be an issue. But people south of Walnut, oh yeah, they're loving it. I mean, it's, you could, you could do it. You could, it'd be very easy for them to use that. But again, I think that's, yeah, the folks I've talked to, it's, it's that concern of those busy girls.
When we talked about it a couple of years ago, it's been a little bit, we talked about that you could only cross Walnut and Gordon and Plummer and Route four at a light or something and you couldn't drive down them. Uh, there, there's ways you can get around town if you were smart enough to not drive on those. Yeah, I don't think anybody has the intention to let golf carts drive on those things. I wouldn't be okay with that, but you could cross at lights is what they said, is what we discussed last time.
I think my concern is making sure we have the manpower to enforce anything that we put out there. Because, you know, we have golf carts on the streets now. I mean, and, and I like the idea of putting some kind of qualifications on them, but we've got to be able to enforce whatever we put out there.
Yeah. Does that add, does that add to Vern's? I mean, are you gonna have a cart, cart cop?
Well, I mean, I just.
It's hilarious that he's ordering.
Overview as far as where I sit on as far as golf carts. I know, I don't know where it was your last time we talked as well. Is I, I'm not, I'm not in favor of golf carts. That's more from a safety perspective. I'm very concerned about, you know, I'm just concerned about golf carts in general. The golf carts obviously are not built in a basket, what a, what a motor vehicle is or what a truck is and such. So, I mean, you know, one thing I, I will just, just share with you real quick, just the, my statute, if you are contemplating uh, golf cart events, this is just from the only criminal statute as far as golf cart, describing what a golf cart is and such. So I just, I'd be one part, one place where I'd start is kind of the, the rules that are, the law that's really out there, uh, with golf carts. Why you said, I'm not a proponent of it. Um, just like anything else, it's, uh, once, once you let something go, um, you know, with a golf cart, I think then it just kind of opens the door to what's next. Whether it be a side-by-side, whether it be a UTV or, or whatever. Um, so that's a major concern as well. As far as policing it, I, I, you know, if you pick up the clearance every, every week, you see, you know, the amount of citations we write speeding tickets and stuff. So as far as policing it, do we have enough manpower? No, we don't have manpower to, to build the police that. As far as registering it and everything else, as far as that part of the process has a whole nother animal in itself. So the safety aspect is one thing I will definitely fall back on. That's, that's a major issue. So.
Are we having issues with the golf carts now?
No, I mean, no, not really. I mean, do, do we see some out there? Absolutely. And so what do we do? Um, you know, we, we like to have positive experiences with our citizens. We do not like negative encounters. A, a negative encounter would be involving someone on a golf cart. So what do we do? We simply ask them, sir, ma'am, the golf cart's not legal in, in the village of Chatham. We ask you to basically take it and park it back in your garage, put it back in your shed or put it wherever, you know, do not be back out with the golf cart. Uh, do, we don't write warning citations. Right now, all we've been doing is verbally, you know, letting those people know that it's not legal in the village of Chatham. Do we, is it an issue? No, it's, it's very minor. We, we don't run into that, that often. Um, you know, one thing is I, I think golf carts could be maybe viable in certain subdivisions. Um, we, we do have subdivisions like, uh, Iron Bridge. That's a good subdivision. It's one way in, one way out. Right off of Route four, I don't know the name of the subdivision, but it has a couple of streets in it. Uh, right off of Route four, it's one way in, one way out. Um, you know, I wouldn't be opposed to, if that you truly want to explore that, to maybe get in with the homeowner associations or, or look at different avenues you can explore as far as maybe certain subdivisions. That might be a, a starting point. But as far as, and I think to be quite honest with you, I, I'm sure there probably are certain individuals that are reaching out to trustees. But I think it's a, a very small amount. I mean, this village consists of thirteen thousand people. I think there's maybe probably less than a thousand would probably be interested in golf carts. Um, I, that's just, that's of my opinion. I think it's a, it's a small percentage.
And Vern, what would your suggestion be on how you would, and maybe it's in here, but how would you handle the high school? Because hmm, what I'd be interested in seeing, how many of these kids would start driving golf, golf carts to high school, which.
Uh, you pose a great question. I mean, obviously you need to be a licensed, licensed to, to drive a golf cart. You have to be minimum age of sixteen. That does bring up a good question is are you gonna have kids in golf carts and driving into school? I.
Again, that's, I see.
That's up to the school anyway. That's private property. They have to make their own rules on whether they allow.
So be the school.
We'd probably be doing them in this favor if we agreed to allow golf carts and then they would have to decide if they are not.
That's okay. So that, that we'd want to assess that.
Can HOAs approve the golf carts?
No, ultimately the, the approval has to come from the village, allow golf carts.
Or could the village ask the HOAs to approve them? So we could truly see what the HOAs feel about it? I mean, if you have, what if we had zero HOAs say they wanted them? Well, then we know what our citizens want, right? We know what the majority really says.
So if you, if you wanted to structure something that way, tell me when I was, you. You, you set the general parameters that are established in, in that statute that Vern handed out on what each vehicle cart would have to have on it to be into the street legal concept. And then you preface your allowance, it's not a blanket wide city, or we don't start off with, you know, these roads are designated as, you know, you can't or can on any of it. And put into that ordinance that you, you're gonna enact it. You allow for the enactment of golf carts within a neighborhood based on the affirmative of, of their HOA. And so if Banner Hill two's HOA gets together and says, you know what? We're, we're good. We like this in our neighborhood. Their HOA takes a vote essentially to add it to their covenant and says it's allowed. Now we have the umbrella over the top of it that says, once that has happened. Now we have the umbrella over the top of it that says, once that has happened, those streets in your subdivision, so you can drive to your neighbor's house or the cookout that's three blocks away. But it's confined into that neighborhood. So you have a situation like, like Piper's is right now. It's combined into that. They can't leave that subdivision on it. So that's a gauge on.
That also holds true with with Panther as well. I mean, it's, I mean, because obviously it's golf courses, but it's it's a golf cart community just in those two communities. And Cedar Springfield does not have a, unless I'm incorrect, or at least may correct me, but Cedar Springfield only has two, two subdivisions that allow golf carts.
So I mean, wouldn't that make sense to you though, Vern, to leave it up to the HO, to allow the HOAs to make that decision? And that would give us, at least it'd be confined, right? For in in terms of your additional burden, you know, as a department? If they're combined, you know, confined to their own HOA, wouldn't that help relieve that burden?
It wouldn't hurt.
I'm just asking. I'm asking you. I mean, I'm being honest.
I don't know. I mean, it's a difficult question to ask.
Yeah, I get it.
So I'm not really sure on that.
Same, same safety concern, just in a tighter area.
I mean, and the village would still have some obligation to review even within those subdivisions, which roads would be okay to drive on because there may be some roads in some of the subdivisions that after review, the village would say there shouldn't, they shouldn't be operating on this road. I don't know that there is any that that would apply to, but the village does have some obligation under the statute to review the roads in the village where the, uh, golf carts are going to be allowed to determine whether or not it's safe or not.
Because the HOA could not, they couldn't enforce it though, could they?
No.
Okay, I was supposed to say, so basically the HOA say we want golf carts, but they just left up to us to.
Have their own covenants that did do something and they could fine their people for not, you know.
Oh, that'd be a fun job.
If they, if they, if there were something, say that they wanted on the golf, golf carts that was in excess or more than what the village required, they could include that in their covenants and they'd fine them, but that's, that's the extent of their ability to enforce anything.
It'd be interesting to see how many people would be interested in, I mean, I mean, I think, I think that's the, our, the hardest part of our, our job is to really get a total gauge on the community and see where they are.
I I would wholeheartedly agree with that. It'd be very interesting to see who would actually, whose HOA would actually approve it. Um, and I think would be an easy way to possibly give people what they want or to find out that that's not what people want.
Positive side of that, it could force some areas that refuse to form a homeowners association to form one so that they could vote whether they want golf carts. Fox Creek is an example. Fox Creek has, it has the most homes of any subdivision in the village of Chatham. But they do not have a home.
Never successfully formed that.
Congratulations to them.
That's the wrong answer.
Anyway. There's arguments on both sides.
Yeah, we.
A lack of one causes as many problems, isn't it?
I I think we we just experienced that one in in our subdivision. We didn't have an HOA. And then we had some issues and just the expense and the burden of the HOA was just because somebody was unhappy because somebody had done something. That's what I'm referring to. Sometimes you have well-mandated adults and then.
By by covenant, most of the subdivisions, especially the newer ones from the last twenty to thirty years, by covenant are supposed to have one, but it's not. It's a civil issue. It's not one.
You live by rules. When you move into a certain area and they have rules and they expect you to follow the covenants of there to try and get you to follow those rules. If if you have disregard for the rules of the subdivision is put together in the area that you want to move into and and you choose not to follow those.
Well, in our case, the builder did not follow through.
Rather than.
That's a, that's a big theory.
A whole different.
We'll talk about that later next door.
For a disclaimer there, the builder never completed our HOA, so it wasn't like we were, we were going against the rules or anything. It was just a fact that it never was carried through.
We're not gonna diss on each of these.
Back to the other questions.
Lisa, can we craft an, I mean, are you telling us, hey, look, if you craft an ordinance to allow this as long as the HOA essentially approves it, right? I mean, in layman's terms, that's what we'd be doing. And then are you saying that after every HOA approves it, we would have to craft another ordinance saying what streets are allowed within that HOA?
No.
I don't think, it wouldn't have to be done by ordinance, but there would have to be some sort of process by which the the village worked with the HOA to determine.
What roads within the HOA are allowed.
Because that's going to protect the village from liability, too. If the village is aware of it, you know, if the village does their due diligence, it's required by the statute, it does offer a level of protection to the village. Because, you know, just having in the HOA saying the HOA approved it, it doesn't absolve this village from.
You wouldn't want carts on Walnut or Gordon or Plummer or Route four. So as you looked at. But like in the case of like Manor Hill, Manor Hill two, Hurstborn, Glenwood Lake Estates, they're all kind of connected. And you don't, you could roam in and out of those neighborhoods and never see a main road. So I mean.
One of the things I thought about was maybe it's all and you're, each golf cart would have a decal on it.
For what zone?
You're good for zone B. So zone B allows you to go to Manor Hill, Manor Hill two, Hurstborn, Ivy Glen.
So that kind of.
That gets pretty complicated, doesn't it?
Well, I could see that being the path, you know, if you get to a spot and then over there by the gas curbs. Right. That if. Turn around. If each one suddenly says, okay, then it becomes easier to say, okay, that it's there for all. And you, and you make it so those zones don't intersect with the schools, so that you don't even give them an opportunity to get to the schools.
But you still open up.
That might be the maturation, how it proceeds from what Tim suggested drafted.
But and then and then spruce, I mean, spruce is a scary spot by itself. I mean.
There are spruces, the Hurstborn targets.
Yeah.
You know, roads like that that are secondary.
They're main, they're, they're main thoroughfares.
Ways, they are. It's a main, it's a main thoroughfare. You get to the parks, church, library. Get to work.
That's where I'm curious about what the whole neighborhood says about it.
I think I would agree. I I would be interested to see what HOA says.
The requirements, too, for the vehicles themselves is.
Oh, yeah.
Is extensive.
It it'll be an expensive car. You'll have seat buckles, you'll have lights, tail light. And just the ordinance you gave us to sample one, I mean, the lights have to meet certain specs, too. I mean, it's not just I throw a couple of.
You can do the stick.
Christmas lights on. It's a power without all the NTSB.
It'd be out of bounds. And so how do we look forward with that?
Or we have Dustin and them build cart paths throughout the city.
Village?
That would be awesome.
Like Peachtree City down in south of Atlanta, it's all carts.
That would be very interesting.
Because right now, currently, they'd have to do the road. There, there's no other. They'd have to fill the roads.
Yeah, no.
No, I'm just asking. I'm just asking that right now they'd have to drive.
Do you want to work with Lisa?
Yeah, let's let's craft something and see what happens.
All right, cool.
Or or not, or or, I mean, I I'm not the only person on the board. What do you think, Carl?
You gotta get, you gotta get to language and I'm looking for somebody that's willing to help write language.
It's worth. I'm willing to help her write the language.
So let me ask you a question that I'm sorry.
For ten minutes at a time.
For clarification.
You have ten minutes at a time.
So basically, we're gonna write ordinance that says we allow them, but they have to be approved by the subdivision? Is that what we're doing?
Or we look at Pat's zone idea or. Essentially, the the way you gauge it, that that's being suggested is we know there are people that are asking for it, but there's also a handful of people that have never said.
Boo, that's right. We might have a bunch of people go, that's crazy. No.
Yeah, out there, so.
And that would be very.
If you take it back to that level, what you say is.
No, they did in the mills and then put a survey monkey thing together, set up so that it could only go from your computer over one time.
I, I just say what their association handles. They've got, they've got boards, they've got people that are elected to represent the the neighborhood through and that.
But it is just if we do that, that we're saying that we are allowing, I mean, we've, I mean, I'm just trying to make sure because.
Saying that we're allowing HOAs to write it into their covenant, right?
And then we're agreeing to.
Here's.
Here's the rules.
Here's the rules if you're gonna do it, but you can only do it in a subdivision that has taken an affirmative step to add that to.
Their covenants.
So basically, the village is condoning the golf carts.
But we don't even know.
Well, it'd be more than that.
But that's what I'm saying. We've, we've got.
Or the licensing or for the coordinating and all of that as well.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
There is a responsibility on the village that we.
We have to have a plan B that if if we have one HOA say yes, then we have to figure out how we're gonna enforce that.
That's all the umbrella stuff.
Yep.
So that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I mean, the the.
Much of that was in that old ordinance.
If you read through the old ordinance, it's clearly states all the, there's a long, long list of rules.
Saying we're, we're, we're basically saying we, we care, but if you decide to do it, then that you let, we let you do it.
You know, as people, people call me this, government, hyper local, that's even more hyper locally citing.
Okay, but that's, but that's basically saying we've got to come up with a set of rules, though.
Yes.
The set of rules will be in the ordinance before we would ever vote on it. There'll be a set of rules right then and there.
And if kids get hurt, the village is not responsible. If we're having the ordinance, there's.
Yeah, I get, I, I, I'm.
Because basically, if we do that, then we're turning it back over to Vern to police it.
It depends, that following the statute and the requirements of it, including the study to determine whether or not, you know, it was a right that the village approved could, for use, will give the village some liability protection. If we just ignore that portion of the statute, which some villages have done, um, I think that there is an issue if there's a collision.
What if, what if I'm on a bike on any of these roads? I can ride.
This requirement is statutory, the requirement to do the stat, to do the study before you allow golf carts on your roads is in the statute.
But even if, but if we do the study, that exonerates us from anything?
It gives you a, it gives you a level of protection. The village has done what's required by statute that it does.
Yep.
If you ignore it, then really what it is, if you ignore it, then it, there's the potential liability issue there. So.
Anybody can sue you for.
That is true. That is true.
That's, that's the summary of what you just said.
If what you fall, if you follow the statute, then.
Your homeowner's insurance isn't going to pay for it. There's a lot to consider.
There is.
Yeah.
And there are insurance requirements in front of you, so.
All right, so we're gonna, you guys are gonna talk?
Yeah, we'll talk. We'll put.
And then we'll go from there.
Turkey talk.
All right, we got that done. Thanks, Tim.
Sorry for lengthy discussion.
No, it's just one, it's worth having.
It's worth having, and we've had it before on this board and, you know, but this is as far as it's ever gone, so. You know, I've been candiding over the HOA is a good idea. We'll see what we're gonna do there.
Sounds good.
Okay, so next is public properties. Nothing there.
Meet next week, the next one.
Nothing?
Nothing on that one, except with all the cool stuff that Dustin's doing.
Yeah, yeah, we kind of covered public.
He already covered it.
In a broad scale. Any public comments on village business? Hearing none. And our next scheduled meeting is July eleventh. And we do have reason for closed session for collective negotiating under two C two. So I need a motion to enter closed session. Trusty Ferguson has made a motion. Can I have a second? Trusty Try has made a second and I need roll.
Trusty Nice.
Yes.
Trusty Try.
Yes.
Trusty Ferguson.
Yes.
Trusty Charles.
Yes.
Trusty Gruber.
Yes.
All righty, and we have no further business following closed session, so all of the audience is welcome to leave. We will adjourn at the end. Show the camera.
He kicking me out?
I'll stop the camera.
You did good on that part.
Yeah.